Good afternoon, the January twenty-three, sorry, excuse me, January twenty-third, 2024. That's the guy that used to say that, sorry. Board work session is now in order. Paul, roll call please.
Ms. Wright.
Present.
Mr. Trent. Mr. Susan.
Present.
Ms. Campbell.
Here.
Ms. Jenkins.
All right, please stand for fudge of each other.
The Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, America, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a couple of presentations that are going to be given today. I know we also have a board meeting this afternoon, so I think to honor everyone's time, if we can just go ahead and establish a time certain stopping point for 4:30, if that's okay with the board, that way we're have a break in between the one from one to the other. Is everyone in favor of that?
Yes.
All right, good, thank you, just wanted to throw that up. All right, so the first presentation we have is for the long-term facility planning update. Ms. Sue.
Good afternoon, everyone, thank you, Mrs. Wright. So this is a follow-on to a workshop that we had back in September of 2023 with Ms. Black and Dr. Meyer talking about our parental choice and how that relates to utilization of our facilities, and our recommendation at the time was to engage our planning consultant, WXY, to kind of do a little deeper dive into some of the drivers of facility use. And so we have done that, and today's presentation, they will debrief what they have found in their work, and then I'll be making some recommendations for additional work going forward. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Adam Lubinski with WXY.
Thank you so much, Sue. Adam Lubinski, partner at WXY Studio, here with Sarah Lee Morrissey of Sarah Lee Morrissey Consulting, real pleasure to be here in person, and it's been a pleasure to have met with you throughout this process. So we have very straightforward presentation, which is really a synthesis of the conversations that we've had with the Brevard Public School Board members. Simple enough, we interviewed each of you to discuss and summarize short and medium-term priorities for BPS facilities. So what we've done is assembled your comments into four basic topic areas. There's obviously overlap, interrelationship between them, but we summarized the priorities we understood from you under programming, aging facilities, utilization and enrollment, and financing approaches. And so what we will do, I'll run through the first three themes, and then I'll turn it over to Sarah Lee to talk through financing approaches. We've constructed a very basic summary of the comments that we received from you, we've kept it high level, obviously it could have gone for quite some time, and we've categorized your comments into four basic categories. First, not a priority or opposed. Second, neutral, weak priority. Third, strong priority. And fourth, it wasn't really discussed on the call. We went into this not with pointed questions, but really as an open-ended discussion to get your ideas and thoughts on priorities. So some, some members covered issues that were not covered by other members. So just to kick off with discussing programming, that was a key theme, it was discussed in many forms by all of you throughout these calls, very interesting feedback. And we'll begin by talking about career and technical education, and just as an opening category, it was very clear from all of you that this was seen as a real strength of Brevard Public Schools. And that was something that we had a number of follow-up questions around in terms of how that could be explored further. One item that came up amongst four of you in strong agreement that there was a desire to cite new CTE programs in repurposed buildings. That's something that, as you'll know, in some CTE programs, that's an easy thing to accomplish, and then in other cases where there may be more complicated equipment, it may be a larger challenge, but there was clear thinking that that would be important to explore among four board members. Now, thinking about where those CTE programs should be located, there was a thought that those should be spread throughout the district rather than in a centralized location, that was a perspective shared by three of you, and one person, it didn't come up in that conversation, one person didn't have strong feelings about it, one way or the other. But clearly a lot to think about in terms of CTE programming. We also heard from all of the board members about the ESE programming. I should let you know, we spent most of today traveling around the district, and we did spend significant time at Gardendale as well, which was really important for us to see. And so commentary we received on ESE programming, we heard clear from all five board members that the ESE programs are lacking and more investment is needed. Following on from that, there was a clear desire to address conditions at Gardendale and consider easing the pressure by developing new campuses or a new campus, I would add, that it could be singular or plural there. So yeah, really clear responses, really important for us to spend time there and see the work that they're, they're doing out there. Alternative learning centers, just to follow on from the ESE, alternative learning center offerings should be expanded to allow, to allow for more age-specific programming. This is something that we heard from two of the members, it didn't come up actually in three of those conversations, but it was prominent enough that we wanted to, we wanted to note it from those two conversations. We did ask folks about STEM and the idea of citing STEM programs in every school. This is something that there was, one person felt like that was a very good idea, two people didn't express an opinion about it, one person felt neutrally about it, and one person was opposed to that. And then finally, on this slide, looking at choice programming, there was some interest expressed by two board members to open a new choice school in the southern part of the county. And then to follow on with a few more points on programming, we can pause after that, and if there are questions or thoughts about the programming slides, we can, we can dive in a little bit. On athletics programming, there was one board member who expressed a strong opinion about expanding the availability and quality of athletic programs to make Brevard Public Schools more competitive. That's something that, it didn't come up in those other conversations with board members, but we wanted to relay that.
I think, because I'm a couple of these topics, I'm like, we know exactly who, the athletics and the year-round schools, like where those came from, we know those ones.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
And we understand with this next point, year-round schools, that there has been some follow-up conversation, I think maybe a workshop on, on year-round schools, so it was something that came up from one board member, the other four board members did not at that time express an opinion about it. And then this last point on programmatic feeder patterns, there was a thought that there might be different feeder patterns across the county that may specialize, tie in with perhaps career and technical education programs or other specific kinds of programming. There were three board members who thought that was a very good idea, and two board members didn't express an opinion on that one way or the other. So I will pause there and open it up for any thoughts or questions or follow-ups on these points, and if there are none, I can move on to the aging facilities.
I don't have any at this time. Four members, no? No, you're good, keep on going.
So we wanted to talk about facility program, facility issues related to aging buildings, and so this first point around colocations and repurposing, the district should prioritize ESE and/or alternative learning center programs for colocations. Four people agreed that was a very good idea, and one person was neutral about it. And just to be clear on colocations, we didn't get highly specific as to what that could mean, it could mean a school campus that has a lot of space, or it could mean repurposing a portion of that school building. And then the second point, underutilized facilities could offer opportunity to expand CTE or pre-K and/or other program offerings. That was something that four board members felt quite strongly about, and a fifth board member didn't express an opinion on. And then the final point under aging facilities, looking at closures and consolidation, considering consolidation and colocation prior to considering closure as part of a unified, community-driven strategy to right-size schools across the district. All of the board members agreed that that was a good idea. Any follow-up on these items, on aging facilities?
I don't have any, it looks like we're, we're pretty much in agreement, which is good, so.
Great. And so looking at utilization and enrollment, first, considering new schools, constructing a new school in the southern part of the county or Palmday, potentially a K-8 school, this in some ways may link to the discussion around a choice school in the South County as well. Three people were in agreement with this, two did not express an opinion. And then thinking about grade configurations, this was something that came up in all of our conversations, everyone had an opinion, one way or the other, considering additional grade K-8 schools is a worthy consideration, two people felt like that was a good idea, two people were neutral about it, one person was opposed to the idea. And the way people were looking at K-8 schools varied in terms of whether it related to offerings or programs or capacity and utilization. Additional grade seven through 12 schools are worthy of consideration, three people felt that was a very good idea, two people were opposed to that. And then thinking about colocation and repurposing, again, linking back to the previous note about aging facilities, consider colocation, repurposing, and/or consolidation as part of a unified, community-driven strategy to right-size offerings across the district. All were in agreement with that as a goal. And then finally, improving the perception of Brevard Public Schools as a way of addressing enrollment, that could include improved marketing of existing school offerings, which could help drive enrollment in existing schools, four people discussed that, were in agreement with that. There were some really creative ideas about how to do that as well, which we thought was, was very interesting. Any questions or comments on the utilization and enrollment? Okay, and I'll turn it over to Sarah Lee.
All righty. Good afternoon. So we did think it was important to ask you a couple of specific questions as it related to financing your capital program. Obviously, all of these different themes, whether we're talking about expanding programs, particularly ESE programs and/or career and technical education, whether we're talking about taking care of our aging facilities or building new schools, whether they be replacement schools for the aging facilities or new schools for growth, all of those have financial implications. And while you may not be considered a large district by the top 10 in the country or even Florida standards, you are a large district, and you do have a large inventory, which requires some significant capital to manage. So that being said, we did, we did hear some strong opinions about debt, you are carrying significant debt at the moment, is using a lot of your LCIF to repay it, and there was some strong feelings amongst three board members that no additional debt should be considered. The one board member did not bring up the issue or respond to a question about additional debt, and then there was a board member that did not have a strong feeling one way or the other about additional debt. And we asked a little bit about the sales tax, and we did that because your sales tax program, as you know it today, the term expires at the end of 2026. So certainly, all of you were aware of that, knowing that it's a significant part of your capital program, and that a renewal was something that should be considered. I would, I, I would like to be able to say on the record here that all board members felt like your staff does a great job with facilities and in particular managing the sales tax program, and I think that's an important thing to recognize. We did, particularly because we were talking about a variety of different issues and knowing that the term will be coming up and you'll be preparing a new program, we asked about how you felt about a longer term than six years. It's our understanding that you're in your third six-year term of a sales tax, and many of you were unaware that the term of the sales tax was something that you could consider differently than the six years. I think it's important for you to know that as of, not last year, 2022, 30 school districts in Florida are implementing a half-cent sales tax program, that's almost half of the school districts in our state, and that's up considerably from 2010, when 16 school districts had a half-cent program. So the half-cent is important to many districts across our state, and I would say that amongst those 30 schools, the term of the program varies considerably. Six years is the shortest term, but there is a school district in the state that has implemented a 30-year term, and there are districts that are doing 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, and then six and 30. So I think that's important for you all to know. When we brought the issue up, the question about the term, several were unaware and weren't really sure how they felt about it, would need to give it more thought, and one board member thought that that might in fact be a good idea for consideration, with another board member having no thought or no current opinion on the question. And then lastly, your sales tax program has to date been focused on renovations, a lot of system replacement issues, there was a question and discussion about whether or not your sales tax could be considered for something beyond that, and you can see that three of you thought that that was something that should be considered in particular as you look at new school construction, whether or not that's new capacity for growth and/or new replacement capacity for your aging facilities. And with that, I believe we're turning it over to Sue.
I just, not really a question, but just a comment on this because I, this conversation around the sales tax and the debt, you know, is, is going to be an important one over the coming years as we consider. I think one of the, when I, just for historical perspective, the, that six-year term, especially the first year, I think was something that was kind of negotiated down because our public, the public didn't really know what we're going to do with it. If, I think if we talk, if we continue to see the growth that our community is seeing, and then the public, the second time around, passed it even higher than the first time around with pretty confident, you know, like a 61% passing rate, I think that's something that the community would understand probably more than ever before if we were able to incorporate, not spend the whole thing on schools because of that, you know, if you talk about that, I mean, how many schools can you build, you know, nowadays with the way, but we, to, to really help with that, you know, we have a choice to build new schools, we can go into debt, impact fees can get us so far, and we were very thankful for them, but you can go into debt or you can fund it with a SRTAC, and consider we still have $300 million worth of debt, and I just, that's something we really want to think about over the next couple of years because those are really our options. We don't really have the option to not build.
Right.
Something, and that's why we're having this conversation today, so, you know, again, something we're just going to really have to think about over the next, really about two years before we have to make decisions on that. Sorry, thanks for letting me have that little interlude there.
All right, Sue.
Thank you, and Ms. Campbell, that was a great introduction to what I'm going to talk about because really this work, in my opinion, is foundational to that conversation of the 2026 renewal of the SRTAC. So what is in there in terms of capital project scope, all will be fleshed out over the next year and a half or so, and so that's why I wanted to get started on this now so that we can determine what, what we do want to do in 2026, and this is really kind of a foundational piece for that. So appreciate the work that WXY did to kind of narrow this down to what are, what are the things that we really should be focusing on in terms of our staff work. And so I feel like there were four main focus areas for our work, and these are the four that I'm going to be recommending to you. The first is, we've got to wrap our arms around how we serve our ESE students, and specifically how we serve the students who need the services of a separate day school. And so that is something that we really are going to need some, some help with. Secondly, the bullet that says strengthen cross-functional approach to facility planning is kind of vague, and that kind of encompasses where do we have our pre-K programs, where do we have our CTE programs, what, what mix of space and programming is right, short-term, midterm, long-term, and that's going to require a lot of analysis because we're, we have so many variables both on our side, and then we're in a competitive educational marketplace too. So where we are today with enrollment is also affected by parents making choices, legislative actions, schools that other entities are building or opening, so there's a lot of variables that play into these decisions, and we're going to have to be adaptable, and we're going to have to be forward-thinking. So I want to set us up for success, and so that bullet is kind of vague and all-encompassing, but I, I feel like we have a path to get there if we use our consulting services as well as our staff to do some good data gathering, analysis, and bringing back some solid proposals and alternatives to the board. The third bullet is a little bit more actionable, we've been talking with the board about the transportation maintenance facility at Pineapple and relocating that, and I think we have an option that will work, as well as using the site on San Filippo as a colocation with a new school, so I'll talk about that in a little bit more detail. And then the fourth bullet is around strategic promotion of BPS services and programs, and that came through in the conversations that you all had with WXY. So dive in, talking about Gardendale and ESE planning, we really need to do some collaborative work with our partners on the educational side of the house, and we would like to bring WXY in to facilitate that conversation and develop a scope of work that will get us to a solid recommendation on what we do with a separate day school function at BPS as well as other ESE needs that we may not even know in facilities. We typically run across these as we are doing projects in schools, but I think it would be a good opportunity right now to really understand the whole ESE landscape and what might be appropriate for us to think about as we move forward with new schools and renovation of schools. You'll see on your board agenda, February 6th is a pretty robust new building at Myla Elementary that is focused around ESE, and I'm really proud of our team, we, we did a, what I think is a good job collaborating with our educational side of the house to really make sure that we are meeting the needs of the students, and I think we in facilities can do more of that as we work through this process with our partners, so I'm excited about this opportunity. But again, there's a lot of different variables, transportation is involved, the location of the, the children changes over time, the services that other providers may offer or not offer fall into, into the equation. So we really need to sit down and kind of look at the universe of this problem and figure out how to best attack it, or what are the two or three different options that we might have to address these issues. So we agree with the board in terms of Gardendale and ESE are critical functions and needs that we need to address, and we'd like to, we'd like to focus on doing that. Our second bullet, I talked a little bit about the cross-functional facility planning, we have great data in facilities, we did our facility assessment that's coming up on a five years ago now, you'll probably see a budget request from me for FY25 to update that information. We have a much better work order system, so we do have really good work order data now, and we're starting to be able to look at trends. So for example, we look at our chillers and we see where our work orders are happening on our chillers, and we can predict this group of chillers probably should be next on the agenda, so really working towards having that like five-ish year capital plan for some of our major assets and building systems. Looking at the educational marketplace, we really need to bring in GCR and what's, what's happening in the world of competitive educational business, looking at our facilities and where we have capacity. So we have, we have some schools that are underutilized, some schools that are overutilized, redistricting has not really been a successful strategy in Brevard Public Schools, so we have to look at our community and bring the community into the conversation around how we match up our spaces and our, our programming needs. So this too is kind of a big undertaking, and it requires some strategic thought and some facilitation. So I would propose to also engage WXY and develop a scope of work and bring that back to the board to, to review with me, but I, I feel like we really need some facilitation assistance to get to, to get this to the end, and the end would be a program of work that we can start to execute in 2026, and some of which would be sooner. The San Filippo site is the third item, and just to orient everybody, this is the location of the site, it's about two miles south of Bayside, which It's about two miles south of Bayside, which is right about in here. This is DeGroot. This, this is Mitten Road. This is Malabar Road. So it's pretty far south. You see Grant Road, the Parkway, New Parkway Interchange is right about in this location. So in talking with transportation, they felt that this site could, could really work for them because it is in a growth hub, as well as very close to the, the new interchange. So it's, it's accessible to good transportation. So this is a site in a little bit more detail. We did talk to the Palm Bay City Manager and their Utilities Director and a few other staff people just to kind of see if there were any significant concerns about this site. And they felt that they could both accommodate us with utilities and would work with us on the, the site development process. So this is something that I think we have this asset, we can easily move forward because we've really been struggling to find a site elsewhere in the county that is not completely underwater or prohibitively expensive. Those are kind of the two choices. And so this seemed like a, a good compromise. We also have been watching our enrollment trends in the Palm Bay area, and they're going up for, for all grades. And talking with Dr. Rendell and the educational side of the House, we think this might be a good place to co-locate a middle school. And so we had asked our civil engineering consultant to take his layout for the transportation maintenance facility, as well as just take the exact layout for the Viera Middle School, and see if both of those will fit on this site. And the, the answer is they do. And, you know, as we get into the details of site development, we'll, we'll have to make sure that all of this fits, and I'm sure we'll have to modify a little bit. But the, the overview is that it does fit. There are some wetlands on the site in this area, so we'll have to address that. There's another one kind of in the middle here. But, you know, these are not insurmountable obstacles. And so what I would like to propose is that we move forward with kind of the site planning and potentially design aspects of this, so that we can get a little farther along. We don't have the budget for another new middle school. Obviously, that's going to take a while before we get there, but I'd like us to get prepared. And so I think the time right now would be spent on engaging appropriate consultants to start site planning, start design work. We're going to have some procurement processes around this that'll take some time, but I feel like it's important that we get started so that we're, we are ready when we need these facilities. So this is what's proposed for San Filippo. And then the final slide is just talking about the strategic promotion of Brevard Public Schools. And in talking with Mr. Brun about this, there certainly are consultant resources that can assist us in doing more strategic promotion and more thorough promotion of BPS. But that, that involves an investment, so, you know, he would have to look at the cost of doing something like that versus the estimated return on investment in terms of enrollment. But if we can, we can talk about all the great things we're doing and help that, or help us drive our enrollment, this might be a good investment of some funds to, to consider trying this in a little bit more robust way. So I think that's it, and happy to take any questions.
All right, board. Susan, you want to start? Any questions?
If you're looking for direction for me, I mean, for you to, so we forward it, like we're moving forward with getting site plans together and everything else, I know, being the fact that it took us like 22 years to build a middle school in Viera, I appreciate you moving ahead of time to get that taken care of because I know Ms. Campbell's district down there is really in need of a middle school. And I promote it 100%, so you have my support in doing so.
Thank you.
Same. Good job.
I'm out of a few words.
Yeah. It sounds like he's kind of stuffed up today, so I might not want to.
Feeling much better.
Okay, that's good. So I just had a couple of questions, just so I can follow where you're thinking, because I, I guess I was a little surprised at the idea of a middle school right there, because we're not quite capacity, but we're going to get there really fast. So I guess just kind of what was this thinking about starting with a middle school, or is it just because if we're going to build something in that location, that is, because I know we're going to need an elementary school, maybe that's on the other side of the highway, so about that. And then also with the bus situation, then where are our main hubs so that we, because where we, we're looking somewhere central, and this is obviously very south and not accessible to the central and north part of the county. So kind of what, where are we left with if we do it just down there and don't do something in the middle?
Okay. So let me start with the transportation question. So if I understand Mr. Wilson's team's view on this, that they will be relocating their Pineapple Avenue functions down to the, the facility that's on Monroe, adjacent to Stone. So that'll pick up kind of that central piece.
Okay.
And then some of those functions would end up being farther south. So I think it distributes the transportation functions appropriately throughout the district, so we won't lose that central piece.
Right. Because I think that Monroe is our farthest south main hub. Everything else is like a little small.
Yep.
Like a shack with some buses, for lack of a.
Yeah, and there's, there's West Side Bus Compound, but West Side is one of our, West Side and Sunrise are two elementaries that are growing exponentially.
Right. But that's what I'm saying. West Side is a shack with some buses. There's no facilities that, you know.
Yeah.
There's not a, no repair. I mean, everything has to, would have to come, so that makes sense.
And then the, the other half of your question about why a middle school, literally every grade is, is stressed in that area. But we think there's going to be some opportunities for developer-driven partnerships kind of in that area in the vicinity of the Parkway Interchange. That might be an opportunity to entertain the K-8 conversation. So I think that the elementary piece will also be on the table at some point, but we felt like this would be a solution in the, in the middle school arena. High school's a whole nother ballgame, and we're going to need to be thinking about that as well.
Right. So if we're not, we're also not locked in. So if we, we move forward with the site development with a plan to build a middle school, but something happens later on, and we say, no, we need another elementary school in that spot, or, or a K-8 in that spot, or whatever, we can redevelop.
Exactly.
Okay.
At, at the rate that we do these projects, like, it will be six months from now before you see anything that's a little bit more concrete than this, because we have to go through a procurement process. We do.
Right, right.
Community engagement, we do design work. Like, it's, it's going to take a little while before we have a go or no-go decision on.
On the school part, though.
On the school part.
Transportation-wise, how fast can we move?
Transportation, we're going to try to move a little bit faster. We're trying to figure out how to co-manage the two procurement processes, because we have one process for the middle school that would probably focus around the prototype use, and then we have another process for transportation. And we're going to figure out how to best manage those together so we're not duplicating work, and we have consultants that are talking to one another. So that challenge is, we're, something we're talking about this week.
Right. And then, of course, we've got the great savings that we're not having to purchase a piece of property, so we can utilize the funds from the sale of the property, the Pineapple property, towards.
Correct.
The building of the facility.
And the board has put, I think we have got about $3 million reserved for transportation already that's been kind of set aside for that project, so we have the resources to get started, and we'll get a better handle on, you know, if we need to phase, which we probably will phase the transportation project ahead of the school project. But I want to make sure that it's done in a logical sequence. So, you know, if we're going to co-locate a chiller, for example, like we size the chiller appropriately, or we phase the chiller, the civil work really has to be done like all at once so that we don't do something on part A that precludes part B. So it really has to be thought of kind of as a one project, and then we will, we can phase the pieces as we build it.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. I, Sue, you're so good that you've answered most of the questions I had, honestly, through just talking. So what do, as far as your expected timeline of where you're looking at for the Transportation Depot, what are you thinking that looks like for completion?
I would say off the top of my head, probably in the two-year timeframe.
Okay.
One and a half to two years.
Okay, all right. And then for the school, that would be long, longer term, so maybe?
It will be dependent on the funding sources that we choose to use.
Okay.
And so I'll, I will come back to you with some ideas on that.
Okay.
Once we have a little better plan in mind.
Yeah.
So probably early in '25 or late in '24, we'll be talking about what are the options. I'd like to look at our, our educational impact fee accrual patterns.
Right.
And how that's going, as well as potential sales tax renewal and how that might fit. But I really want to be a little farther along before I, I make a commitment on that.
Okay. We won't hold you to it.
Those are kind of the thoughts.
You know, where are we, just a, just a general idea, so. Now, you have my support, honestly. I think us owning that land is, is tremendous. That's a huge amount of savings. And I know you, you guys have been searching for a spot, and this has been a hurdle that has been very hard to overcome. So if this is a solution to that problem, and it saves us having to acquire another piece of land or property, I think that's a, a good solution all the way around.
Thank you, Tom.
Ms. Jenkins, I know you just came in, so.
No, I'm going to make a wild assumption since I just walked in, and I apologize. And I'll explain why I was missing later tonight, for good reasons. But I'm going to assume that we are going with the San Filippo site and moving forward with it. Okay.
So moving forward, just to clarify for everybody that's watching right now as well, moving forward is just, we're giving Sue's team the authority to, the green light to continue the planning process.
Right.
You know, more detailed plans, more site analysis, can we fit these two different projects on that site? How much will it cost? What funding mechanisms do we have? That kind of thing. So, you know, we don't need a headline that says we're building a new school or whatever yet. But to go back to the question about why a middle school versus maybe another elementary school or a K-8, Southwest and Central are both pretty much at capacity. And so if we were going to do, if we, if we had the opportunity to build just one building in that south area, you know, a larger middle school, not larger, but basically we, I don't know if you could tell, but on the site plan that was on Slide 16, it's Viera Middle School. So basically, we wouldn't have to pay any design fees or anything. We already know, already paid all that, we just take that design and put it down there. We would see more relief, you know, at the middle school level for Southwest and Central with the, with that one building, than we would see relief if we were to build another elementary school.
Right.
The numbers just, we don't yield as much relief.
Right.
You know, so, you know, now, I'm not saying that we're only going to build one building down there, you know, probably going to have to build more, but I think this is the first step, you know?
Yeah, I, I very much appreciate that. You know, and I've, I've brought to the conversation before that the biggest city in the county of Palm Bay has one middle school and it's city limits, so that's why we're busing kids to Central, busing kids to Stone.
Right.
You know, but it, it definitely makes sense.
Yeah, this location, we think, can service that really south part of the county pretty, pretty well.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree. I'm going to have to drive down there so I can take a look at it.
And, and the other thing that's consistent is, is that this is what we did with Viera Elementary. Everybody was screaming for the middle school, but it was the need of what was at the time here in Viera. And then also, just so everybody knows, that if you ever did need to move to a K-38 model, those rooms are big enough to both service the middle school and the elementary school the same. So Viera Elementary has the larger rooms to do the same thing, too. So it's a good build, good idea.
All right. Do you feel like you have third direction as far as, as moving forward and pursuing?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. You'll, you'll see several contract documents coming your way in the next 30 to 60 days.
Bring them on, bring them on.
All right. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll give them just a moment. Our second presentation is a discipline update from Ms. Dampier and her team.
I don't know.
Rena. She put snacks on here.
Sorry. There's, there's a fruit fly in here.
Did you ever notice that Sue's the only one brave enough to sit next to me?
Ah!
I mean, I, I don't know what it is.
All right.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mrs. Wright, and board members, and Dr. Rendell. I am pleased that my team and I will provide a district discipline update for the second quarter. As promised, our last update was on October 31st, and so we're going to provide you an update as to what has happened, comparing last quarter, last semester, first semester versus this year's first semester as far as the discipline. And then for Title IX and Bullion, we'll provide that information as well. Oops. The agenda today, we're also just going to review the organizational structure for discipline, and then we're going to provide some highlights of actions taken thus far to improve discipline within our district, an overview of the discipline data, net steps for discipline, and then our Title IX and Bullion update, and then we'll entertain questions at that point in time. Just wanted to remind everyone about our structure. We have a unique structure that's been working very well. It's a collaboration between Student Services Division and the Chief of Schools Division. Student Services really is, is in charge of the training, the processes and procedures, the monitoring to make sure that we're coding our discipline infractions correctly, as well as the processes for the expulsion process. Our Chief of Schools, if we see trends, if we see that referrals are not being processed in a timely manner, we meet with Mr. Reed and Mr. Reimer, meet weekly to review that data to make sure that we're in compliance. Because if we're not monitoring what we expect, then of course, we can't wait until the end of the semester for that. So we monitor that on a weekly basis to make sure we are implementing with fidelity. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Reed to review some of the positive impacts, as well as move on with the discipline.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I want to just spotlight some of the highlights so far this year. We've been, seen a very positive impact with the discipline referrals being processed in a timely manner. The expectation is 24 hours, and we do hit that mark the majority of the time and intervene when necessary. But that is a significant change, that incidents are handled in a, a very timely manner, both for the learning opportunity and foreclosure of the event. We also started this year a new meeting with the, the supervisors of the areas at District Transportation, and that has become very productive in our meetings throughout the month. So we meet once a month with those leads, and we discuss problems and solutions at those meetings. Another big win was transportation supervisors entering discipline referrals rather than a bus driver writing a referral, delivering it to the assistant principal after two routes had already happened, right? And so now that, that driver at the end of an AM or a PM route is writing a referral, delivering it to their supervisor, and it's also a touch point for the supervisor and the bus driver, right? They can talk about maybe some, some things within their ability on the bus to handle. So it's a coachable moment for the driver and the supervisor, as well, much more timely. So again, if there's a PM referral, the expectation is that when the dean or assistant principal arrives at school, that they would pull that data so that they can intervene immediately with the, the driver's referral. And again, we've seen those being closed as well in that 24-hour window. We have continued with the district discipline work group. We have our upcoming meeting, I believe, on February 8th. And again, those were a diverse group of members across our commu, our community, two of which you each appointed. And then we also hold monthly meetings with BFT to address concerns and questions, and again, have had great productivity in, in solving problems in the moment rather than waiting for them to brew into bigger problems. All right, we're going to dive into some of the data. Again, as Ms. Dampier shared, this is semester one of this year comparing semester one of last year. On this slide on the left, we have discipline referrals. You can see that we were at roughly 35,000 at this point last year versus 45,000 this year. So we do have an increase in referrals, as we did the last time I gave this present, we gave this presentation to you. On the right is an interesting data point that is similar to last year as well, and that is the number of students that are receiving those office You can see that we were at roughly 35,000 at this point last year versus 45,000 this year. So we do have an increase in referrals as we did the last time I gave this present, we gave this presentation to you. On the right is an interesting data point that is similar to last year as well. And that is the number of students that are receiving those office discipline referrals. So looking at 23, 24, you would look at that as 15,000 students received those 45,000 referrals. And so that could be, you also could look at that as one-third, right? So if we look at 22, 23 as well, it's not exactly a third, but it's pretty darn close, right? So again, trends along the same lines are good. Trends along the same lines also are good to say, what could we do that's different so that we don't produce the same trend? But again, we can see a third of the students are getting those referrals. There, yep, three referrals apiece, yeah, could be, could be one way, yep. All right, so now what we'd like to share here is the top 10 highest discipline codes. And again, we have 2020, 22, 23 on the left and 23, 24 on the right. Gonna be some similarities and a few differences. And that comes down to some of what we're kind of shining a light on and focusing on this year compared to last. Willful disobedience has maintained that number-one position. It is a bit of a catch-all, so many things do fall into that. And so rightfully so that that would be in the number-one spot. But we can see as we move on to position number three, we do start to see some minor changes, but just reversing the order. That number-five position, electronic device misuse, the number is significantly different at 4,126. And that has been something that we focused on. And that's evident that what we've made clear and what we've set as a focus is being focused on at our local level at our schools. Where that number six and seven this year, there is some split of that data. There were some changes between last year and this year. And so that does make explaining the big picture a little difficult. But you can see there was roughly 4,200 in all between physical aggression pre-K through 12. Okay, so that number is significantly higher. The younger grades in 22, 23 didn't even make the chart, right? So we are seeing instances, higher instances of physical aggression would be the generalization that I would say. Again, it's not in a mirror from last year to this year because we made some changes to those grade-level ranges. But again, to summarize 23, 24, physical aggression incidents are higher in all when looking at all grades. Fighting is another one that you'll see that's not even on this list, right, on 23, 24, where it was in the number-eight position in 22, 23. The number of incidents to date on the end of the semester for this year for that same code were 1,031. So again, it was several hundred away from even making our top-10 chart this year. And the other change that's on this slide for 23, 24 that I wanna spotlight, again stemming from those transportation meetings and those referrals, is the number-nine position. We had 1,445 bus violations minor or referrals that were processed and handled, whereas that didn't even make the board last year. And there's many reasons why, but probably writing, submitting, and processing was a big one of those.
So before we leave this slide, I just wanna clarify a couple things. So Mr. Reed mentioned that the physical aggression numbers are up. And you might say, oh, my gosh, more physical aggression. Well, the codes for physical aggression are up, the codes for fighting are down.
Right.
Yep.
So in other words, we're coding things differently. You know, so may not be any more instances of misbehavior involving physical contact between students, but we're coding it differently. And by coding it differently, we're able to address it differently to make sure we're addressing the right type of behavior with the right consequence. So just, you know, when he's like, physical aggression's up, the codes for physical aggression are up. Doesn't mean the number of physical, you know, activities involving two or more students is up. Especially when fighting is down, it means we're probably coding things slightly differently. Better education, better options.
One of the things that I, obviously, it's very blatant right here, but physical aggression, third through 12th grade is down significantly.
700, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's a huge drop that we've seen that's been reduced there. It's interesting now, looking at that pre-K through second grade, to be able to identify that there's more physical aggression happening at those younger ages than there are at the older ages, which is a good point for us to look at and considering how are we gonna handle this and make sure that we stop and get it under control, so.
But those incidents may have been coded as fighting in the previous year.
So I would look at, so if you look at noncessor fighting, 1279, it doesn't even make the list now, though.
Right.
So Ms. Pam, do you know that number, what that noncessor is now by any chance?
His 1031.
1031, so you're down, so if you look at it from a teachings perspective, I was amazed. So I printed this out last night and I was going through it over and over again. So your main areas that our work groups came to us about were that there was physical harm. There was all these things that were going on. And if you look across this, fighting is down, 1031. Fighting, physical aggression, third through 12th is down 700. And what you see here is, is that, yeah, there might be 10,000 new referrals or higher referrals, 2,500 more electronic device misuse minors.
Right.
So showing that the teachers feel the capacity and the power to write the kids in the referrals, they're now doing it. Look at this, classroom disruption and minor. They're able to write 500 more referrals because they feel like they can do it. Those were huge indicators last year that our staff was telling us that weren't. When I went around to the schools recently and spoke to some of the bus drivers and some of the teachers and even the admin, they are ecstatic about the power that they have inside their classrooms, about what we were able to do for them. The administrators, the teachers were in such a good feeling. And those, I tell you, the bus drivers, it was like the greatest feeling to talk to them about how much they now have the ability and then the respect, because you're talking to their people. This right here, I was looking at it like out of a signed area. I don't know if you guys remember, but last year, they were told that in some cases, they couldn't even write a referral for out of a signed area because of the way that it was. And the principals were all upset about that. So there's, these are all in line with everything we're saying. But what we're seeing is, is that they, the trend that the teachers are writing the referrals in are inconsistent with having control of that classroom. And then the physical violence that we saw is down. So I just wanted to say thank you. Like this is, when I read this yesterday, I was ecstatic, so thank you.
I just would add to that, it's not, the sign of them having control of their classroom is not gonna be true until we get to where these numbers start dropping. Because yes, it shows that they have, they can do that, but until the behaviors start, unless it's showing that a behavior is changing, that's why I hope you're gonna continue on after the third quarter and the fourth quarter. Because what I want to see, what we all want to see is, there was a spike which we expected because we tightened some things up, but then it starts to fall off, you know? And especially with electronic, you know, device misuse. That should fall off as the students really get the hang of, no, we are serious, you can't, you can't use your cellphones on campus. Same thing with the tardy to class. I think that that number's kind of funny, it's like up 2,400. That could be one middle school who spent the semester locking doors and we're gonna get this because you have a school, middle school is like 700 kids. And they do a few weeks of writing detentions for tardies because they, you know, you could rack up hundreds right there. But I mean, the, as, but they need to start falling off. That's the sign of the true success that Mr. Susan was talking about. Not that it keeps going up, that eventually then we start going down the hill. So I would like for us to continue, that may be already planned every quarter, I wanna see these numbers.
Yeah, I mean, we were gonna do this every quarter as long as we're doing this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Speaking to that, when I, I just wanna throw a shout-out. When I was at Vera High School, the first day, legate locked the doors. And all the kids were like, what are you, after the bell rang, like, what is this? What are you doing? She's like, nope, go to the front. Because she held them accountable and the parents are really ecstatic because they were having an issue with that. 2,500 tardies to class more. I mean, like, you look at two categories, cellphone and tardy to class, that's 5,000. That's half of the increase of referrals in just those two places. It's incredible. So we're doing it, thank you.
So I wanna second what Ms. Campbell said. I think it's important for us to recognize that it is going up. And again, reiterate that that's not necessarily the worst thing in the world. The other thing that no one's really touched upon is, we didn't really reflect on the honesty of what the numbers really looked like last year, that they were naturally deflated from user error, right? We had a whole new system in place. We had a lot of staff and teachers that were saying it was difficult for them to figure out how to code it or multiple codes and things of that nature. And through this conversation, that has been clarified and retrained and re-taught to our staff to feel compelled to correctly identify certain incidences that are happening in their classrooms. So naturally, those numbers are gonna go up and be more accurate, hopefully. That's what, that's what we hope for. And so I'm with Ms. Campbell, you know, we're not really gonna see the effects of, is our discipline and our consequences actually helping to diminish this behavior or modify that behavior for at least another year or two? And the other thing too, I just wanna say about the pre-K, the second grade physical aggression. I know that, you know, we've got different codes going on and changes in that nature. But another thing to recognize too is, not that it's a developmentally appropriate behavior, because we don't want kids being physically aggressive, but it is a very natural response to students who are in crisis or students who are struggling or frustrated and things of that nature. And so I would love for us to always be paying attention to that number to make sure we either see a decline or it stays pretty consistent. So we can make sure that we're helping those kiddos out from pre-K to third in case it's linked to some academic deficits. Thanks.
All right, I'd like to chime in there. Thanks for all this work. And some of these, I'm okay with them going up. I mean, the minor things, tardy, classroom disruption minor, electronic devices, it appears, you're gonna stop looking at my notes, but it appears classroom teachers are taking controls, control of their classroom. And when that happens, the big things start to go down, the fighting, major aggression, because schools start to take control and the students start to understand why they're there. And it's to be in the classroom when the bell rings. And that's when a lot of things get out of control, when we're not paying attention to the small things. So I don't mind that. Why, there's lots of reasons. I mean, you wanna say morale. Remember a year ago, we had teachers walking out, teachers emailing and calling us saying that they're not being able to do the things that they went to school to do, which is teach. They're not writing referrals because they didn't think it was gonna be processed or wasn't gonna be handled. Things have changed. Those are the phone calls I get now when I'm out, and when I'm out in the schools, is teachers and principals saying, you know, things are starting to change. Teachers are taking a little bit more ownership in their classroom and we see it. And you can't fool a kid. And they see this. And when teachers are more involved in their classroom, then they'll be more involved in their classroom and doing the things that they're supposed to be doing. So I don't mind the small things, you know, the tardy to class is like running extra sprints in sports. It's okay, that stuff, that'll pay off. Maybe some of the incidents were just not reported, we saw that in the audit. And so these numbers really are not going to be, you know, side-by-side when we're coding things differently from one year to the next. You know, it's like our new fast-testing data, it's not the same for a couple of years. We'll see how it goes, but this is, this is really promising.
And what, if I may, what's really incredible is, is there was absolutely a aura of teachers who said, we can't write referrals because they just come back. We write a referral, it's not being processed, the kids are coming back. We dealt with that. The other issue is, is that what's amazing about this number being low for fighting, physical aggression and stuff like that, is that many of those were sent up. Remember, our principals didn't have control over what they did for their suspensions past a certain number of days. So they would send up the request for fighting, for all these other things. And then they would be asked to recert those and change those, which also lowered those numbers. So there was a lot of stuff that went on, and that's in part of the data that we uncovered, that we went through, that this number's being down in those categories is even more significant because the numbers that we're seeing over here weren't even as high as they should have been. So I'm just ecstatic in the fact that our morale is starting to turn and everything else. So thank you, thank you for all your work.
Yeah, good work.
They have more data to share.
Yeah, let's keep going, I know, I know.
I got more notes.
Go ahead.
This is a new slide that we put together by request to try and spotlight some of the demographic differences through some of those top-five discipline codes. So what you can see here on the bottom is the color code of willful disobedience, out-of-assigned-area, tardy, disruption, and electronic misuse. And we'll use willful disobedience as kind of our guide to review the data. Going from the bottom up, we can see that our Black African-Americans, that that piece of the bar is the amount of the referrals written for that demographic group. The table above would show you again the precise number. So of the 6,329 willful disobedience referrals written, 2,343 were written for our Black African-American students, 2,544 for our white, and so on down the other demographic groups. So again, you can use the size of the bar and going up with the demographic groups to compare either of the top, any of the top-five incidents that were reported that we just reviewed a moment ago, broken down by demographics. Corrective actions on the flip side, now what students were doing and now what we're doing as a corrective measure to help with that. Again, 2022, 23 is on the left, 23, 24 is on the right. Admin detention still is in that number-one position. We can see that out-of-school suspension is in the number-two slot where it was in the number-three spot the previous year. I do need to explain briefly that we had three out-of-school suspension codes last year, okay? We had one to three days, we had three to five days, and we had a two to 10. We realize the errors in that for data, hence me only reporting one data point, the highest of the suspensions last year, right? So of course, if three different data points now are smushed into one, it's going to be higher. The data last year for all available suspension codes at this point last year was 6,709. So we still are ahead of that, of what last year was. But I did wanna put a disclaimer out there that that data is somewhat misrepresented because it is only reporting on the 22, 23, one of the suspension codes. And again, this is not days, it's number of times that out-of-school suspension was used, right? And the same with any of these. So again, as we go down the list again, conference student obviously is the reverse. In-school suspension mirrors. Lunch detention, though, interestingly, is on the chart where it was not before.
That goes with the tardies.
It goes with, yeah, very, well said, yes, yes. Okay, and thank you. Lunch detention wasn't an official code, so last year, right? So again, our work of revising the code of conduct, right? We put something in place that's being utilized, right? It was probably needed because tardies were always happening, right? But now we gave them a tool for that. And again, very similar things with the exception of teach and reteach, it was in a little different position, but very similar pieces that you can see there, with the exception of the restorative practice is lesser, or is not, did not make the board do the higher numbers. You can see that we were in the 2000s this year, where 700 made the board last year, right?
I just have to say on this slide, you know, because the story sometimes, we're just gonna suspend more kids or we're gonna, and there are some numbers going up. But I'm very happy to see the number of phone conferences going up significantly, the number of parent conferences with parents going up significantly, and conferences with students, you know, is up there still. Because we're doing more than just getting out, we're having those communications home, which is really important to, you know, to get into solutions. So even though it didn't, you can't just look at where it moved on the thing, you have to look, you know, looking at the wrong numbers, thank you for putting those on there because it was really important for me to see those numbers going up too.
Now we will look at in-school suspension and out-of-school suspension from a number of days rather than a number of instances that that was used. So in-school suspension, we've had a slight decrease this year compared to last year, 4,800 versus 5,011. Out-of-school suspensions, as we just saw, are shared for instances. We have number of days at 1,000, or 15,358 compared to 14,000 roughly. The in-school suspension decrease, you know, some schools have the personnel to do that, some schools don't. So that is, you know, a tough number to say, let's hypothesize about that. But those that do have it, the number has decreased. One could say there's less personnel that are doing that. That's a question mark that we don't know. But again, the number of days that are there, you can see for both in- and out-of-school suspension for semester comparing years. I was asked to kind of give a orientation to risk ratio. And this is gonna be my attempt to do that, to kind of norm the group here. So we're gonna start here with just an overall slide that sets a, what a 1.0. Again, with risk ratio, I wanna remind everyone that 2.5 is kind of that alert status when we have a risk ratio of 2.5. And 3.0 is kind of that must-take-action with regard to that particular subgroup. regard to that, that particular subgroup. So in this, this infographic here on the top, we've got 10 African American students, and five of them have at least one referral, OK? So five of the 10 have a referral, and you can see that visually represented by the students holding their, their referral in front of them. The rest of this tiny school has 20 other students, right? And for, and of those 20 other students in, in all demographic classes, 10 of those students have at least one referral. So when we take a look at that, what we would say with the African American students is five out of 10 students of the African American students had a referral, or 50%. When we look at the 10 of the other category of all others had referrals out of those 20, we would say that's 50%. When we put those two numbers over one another, we would say that our African American student risk ratio would be 1.0, OK? And so that's equal, right? 1.0 is, is that number that says we're, we're the same across when comparing one, one demographic class to another. Now, let's take a look at that data, and we're going to manipulate it a little bit to just see what the impact of change is. So same data on the top for our African Americans, we're going to go with five students had referrals out of the 10 African American students. We're going to make a change, though, to the all, all other demographics, and we're going to change those 20 students to five instead of 10, OK? So I'm going to start to erase students from there, erase five of them, and now we're left with a total of five students, OK? So again, same math. At the top, we had five African American students with referrals out of 10 at 50%. Now, five of all others with one referral out of the 20, giving us 25%. Again, when we, we put those two numbers over, what we would have there is a 2.0 for our African American students, or an African American student in this data set on this infographic would be two times more likely to have a referral than the other students in the school, is how you would, how you would state that representation of that data. We do that orientation to share with you our risk ratio here in Bervard at the semester. And so you can see the different demographics that we've pulled, and we've got the greenish bar for 22, 23, and the blue bar for 23, 24. We can see we have a slight decrease in the students with disabilities. We can see we have slight increases in other, other areas. What's important to know is time is on your side when you are looking at this data, because every day the data does change, very much so at an individual site, not as much so at the district when we're comparing all students. And again, we have some, some slight increases and some slight decreases, but the data is there again for, for the semester. Mr. Susan.
Are you finished with your explanation?
Yes, sir.
Free and reduced lunch, where code is not a zero or an N, can you explain that component, what that means? Like, is that the free and reduced district risk, risk ratio?
That is our, just like, that, that mirrors the DOE's definition, is what we use. We don't use a different definition. We mirror what the state would mirror if we were to be asked to, to fix that.
What's the zero and N?
Because when you look at, when you look at, yeah, I mean, I was, Ms. Campbell can go after me, but that's a significant increase, right? And if you look down at some of the trends, you notice that multiracial went down, Hispanic a little up, white went down, right? So that can, is, if you, is there a way that you can send that to me that's broken down by race? Because I would wonder if, you know what I mean, if the increase was also spread out among the races. Does that make sense to you?
It does. You are either free and reduced or not. Now, in the SWD category and Dr. Bias's ESE world, she's required to break down that SWD category by ethnicity. So one could try to problem solve, which maybe ethnicity that's in free and reduced lunch is higher. I don't know, we don't have any reporting to do that. We only have that for SWD. It would be raw data that would have to be done and calculated.
The reason I'm getting to it is the next layer, which would be to divide it between male and female. And I think that there's, I think there's a significant amount. I spend a lot of time in, in a lot of different areas, and I have boys that are white, African American, Hispanic, that are, that are, students that have situations, and I, and I feel that having mentors for those children would be definitely beneficial to helping them with some of the discipline and stuff like that. So just a theory that I have, that's all.
Ms. Campbell, did you have something to add? Oh, I just didn't know what the zero or N means.
That's right.
OK.
I mean, I'm not an expert on free and reduced lunch, that's, that's how it's reported. I can look into that and get, get you that information, but that is, that is not my domain.
Yeah, it's basically just free and reduced lunch, just general, OK.
Correct.
Curiosity kills me sometimes.
Yeah, nothing wrong with that. So moving on to the Alternative Learning Center, reporting some of the, the number of students that haven't, had an expellable offense that have gone, that we have offered placement at the Alternative Learning Center. So I'll begin at the bottom. We can see that this year we have offered, or have, an incident has happened that was expellable, and we have offered a student the opportunity to attend the ALC in lieu of an expulsion. When looking at that number, 325, your, your instinct is to say, it's less, right? We're sending less kids to the Alternative Learning Center. That number comes with a, with an asterisk. So at the bottom shows you that the 135 students at the day of the end of the semester had been offered drug diversion. So last year, any instance of drugs would have resulted in potentially the ALC, so, or alcohol. So one would, to have an accurate number, you would add those two numbers together, 135 and 325. We don't report them that way because our students aren't going to the Alternative Learning Center. But I didn't want, I want to celebrate that number. I'm happy that we're decreasing those numbers and giving students the opportunity to stay at their school and learn from their mistakes. But I did want to make sure there was clarity with regard to that, that overall number, that that wasn't taken out of context.
Just, I just have a quick question on that. I'm assuming that you're tracking these, the 135 that, that chose the drug diversion. Do you have any data on how many of those have offended and possibly ended up at the ALC versus stayed the path of, how successful is the drug diversion program?
We, we have that data. Mr. Armstrong pulled it for me yesterday. I'm going to have him pull it up, because I can't remember what it was.
OK.
So those are students, what I believe you're asking is they enrolled in drug diversion.
Right.
There's, there's two drug diversion, there's two ways to fail drug diversion.
Right.
One is you use drugs again, right? And the other is you violate the stipulation agreement.
Right.
So let's just say while you're on drug diversion at your school, you fight. That's a violation of the stipulation agreement as well.
Right.
So we do try to look at those in two ways, and Mr. Armstrong's going to apply and pull that out for me, because I didn't write that, to have that in hand for you.
OK, I just would like to see that and how successful that was, because that was the number one offense that we saw that was sending kids to the ALC when we were looking at what offense was committed.
Sure. So we believe, and we're pretty darn close, but I don't have it slid up to, but it's six. Six students have been offered drug diversion, been on drug diversion, and have violated their stipulation agreement.
So that's pretty successful, then.
100% agree with you, yes.
129 that haven't.
Correct, yes.
I'll take that as a number.
All day, yes.
Thank you.
I think it's also, needs to be said that there's a lot of our principals last year that were saying that they were not able to send kids to ALCs based upon some of the ramifications of the discipline policies that we had prior. And so the numbers here also are at a deficit from what we may have seen had they had that opportunity last year. So even though it would be similar cases, they were not sent up, they were rebursed and changed and sent back. So I know that for a fact. All of my principals were screaming about that when it was coming. So I wanted to say thank you, but I wanted us to also remember that one of the reasons that that is where it is, and it should be significantly higher from the year before, is because of that. Thank you.
Yep, and I do just want to remind everyone again, the demographics are there as well, but also a change from ALC this year. Last year, as we used to have earned return, and now we have windows of time for, it's at the semester or more, you would, you would be able to come back in. So that number is six for drug diversion, yes.
And also with that, the concern last year, even from the, the principal and at the Alternative Center, is that there wasn't a time, enough time to provide interventions, because by the time they were there only for six weeks, five weeks, they didn't, they were just starting to get counseling, and then they were going back to their school. Now there's time for those students to get that at the Alternative Center.
Question would be if our, if our, if that component of what we're doing is right, then we would have less kids repeating, doing it this year, which will be an interesting factor to see at the end of the year, is if our interventions are working, then you'll see less of those kids doing, which is another metric that I think we'll nail. Yeah, I'm really excited.
All right. Good deal. Good job. All right. This one's good, too.
All right, so this, what this data is showing you is, again, the reasons why students are being offered the placement at the ALC in lieu of expulsion. And again, I won't, I won't spotlight a ton of these numbers, but you, one number to see there is the decrease in the drugs for going to ALC. And again, the number for drug diversion, choosing that, is, is on the bottom there to help keep that in perspective. Now, one thing that we've talked about today, fighting, there is a difference between the fighting that is at 75 students going to the ALC to the fighting that we talked about before. So this is the Cessar version of fighting that's on this, versus the local level fighting that is a lesser incident. So I want to make sure there's clarity on that.
Sorry, just Cessar, the Cessar fighting violation is for the 23, 24, correct?
20, well, you can see, yeah, so you can, just because we spoke of fighting today.
Right.
Fighting, there are 75 incidents that students went to the ALC under the Cessar-defined definition. Last year, we had 37. I just didn't want there to be confusion that, you know, the number I gave you a minute ago for last year was 1,031 incidents.
Right, not all fighting goes to the ALC.
Not all, there's Cessar fighting and there's non-Cessar fighting. One is, is more aggressive and doesn't stop, the other is, is lesser.
I thought it's pretty interesting that I printed this off of your print, and it said 69, but up there it says 75, so you're updating that quickly.
We are, we are, yep, we were, you know, I, I had the opportunity to present a cabinet, have some discussion, we're making sure we keep this on point.
That's pretty impressive, I just want to say.
So this slide goes on to spotlight for us the sites, and again, it's, it's 22, 23 in the middle column of each slide, and 23, 24. So this slide is to show you what sites are sending students to the ALC for the various expellable offenses that were on the previous slides. Some schools are sending more, some schools are sending less. There is no necessary rationale, but again, it's back to the conversation that we had a few minutes ago, that principals are driving those decisions at their schools, they're handling their investigations. When there's questions on, you know, what does this meet that definition or this definition, there's conversation between Mr. Armstrong, myself, and Mr. Raymer on an ongoing basis, but we're not giving permission, we're not telling them what it is. We are guiding them to make those decisions themselves through the definitions that are in our code of conduct. So lots of times a day, we say, let's pull up page two and look at definition 12 and 75, and let's say which, let's see which one that most represents. Again, though, these are the sites at the semester that have made a recommendation for the Alternative Learning Center. So last quarter, you had asked some questions about the data for, we only offer the Alternative Learning Center. Then parents may choose in lieu of that to pursue home education, and then they may also pursue private school or may pursue Florida Virtual School. To our knowledge, we have none that have pursued the private school, and sometimes that's very difficult for us to know. But we do keep tabs on who pursues home education, and sometimes that's home ed and Bervard Virtual, or sometimes it's just home ed. So for our data purposes, we just track home ed, OK? You may do it home ed style.
Right.
But you may also enroll in some Florida Virtual, OK? We are a pass-through for Florida Virtual as well to help get them enrolled. But again, you start with home ed and then also enroll in Florida Virtual. So we only track the, the home ed. You can see last year, 8% of our students, or 32 of them at this point, that were offered ALC, elected to go to, choose home ed, whereas this year, 14% of the 325 or 47 have pursued home education, or have enrolled in home education of some Florida. We then were asked some, about some data on the demographics of that as well, and so we're providing that to you this time for both last year and this year. Looking at 23, 24, 45% of the white students or 21 of those 47 have pursued home ed in lieu of ALC, are black, African American, 34%, or 16 of the 47 have pursued home ed in lieu of ALC. So again, those were questions that came up last time, so we decided to give you the answers and give you current data as well. So talking a little bit about some next steps, again, some are similar, but others are different. We, we are continuing to monitor those sites that are at 2.5 and working on some monitoring plans with them. We're working for, always for data completeness. We're always going to be growing on accuracy with the sheer volume of those referrals. It's a tough task to, to always work on accuracy, but monitoring that processing in a timely manner is an easy task that we've really been working hard to keep up on and is very evident in our schools. We've continued trainings. We're excited to say that 114 staff members have attended the MTSS behavior training and the four sessions that we've offered, and we're going to continue to offer monthly. 110 staff have attended the functional behavioral assessment and behavior intervention plan development training in an effort to try and norm that practice and how we do that and when to do that, right? It's not something we want them to jump to immediately, so we're providing quality, consistent training. We've also continued to offer behavior intervention toolbox. We refer to that as BitBox. PBIS is an ongoing work that we train in more depth in the summer, but we have offered some trainings. We have training monthly. The principals see me once a month in front of them, and we get to talk about what we've learned over the course of the last month to make improvements, as well if that's needed with assistant principals. We continue to coach and mentor teams, whether that be the, our MTSS team, or that be Justin and I, working with teams to problem solve and be consistent. And the development of the MTSS behavior website is a continued resource for all of our, our staff. We'll be providing an update to the RSM audit on the 26, so we, we look forward to sharing those pieces, all of which are really showing through on this data that's clearer, it's more accurate. And then we also wanted to share that we have begun uploading in our, into focus in the referral, student statements, so that they are attached to the referral, so it's a kind of a one-stop shop. We have aspirations to start to have expulsion packets be there as well, so that we could always be able to easily reference that. We've begun uploading statements, so we're growing from where we were. We're working on corrective action alignment in focus, so that when you pick a, a certain incident, you only can pick from certain corrective actions. That is the most difficult thing to get right, right now. So we're, if we can lock it down or limit it, it will help us ensure that we have as accurate data and, and everyone following the code of conduct in, in every instance. And last, we are going to be developing and launching a survey for administrators and bus drivers on our, how they're feeling about the discipline procedures, and we'll work on that, that going out to them next month.
Before we move on to the next section, can I, yeah, I was waiting just because there was things that are all kind of intertwined. So I don't want to move on to this next section without saying my piece about the uncomfortable part that nobody ever wants to talk about out loud, and some of this stuff ended up in this presentation, because I quite frankly requested it. I've requested it time and time again, and, and I think that we are doing it a disservice when we don't identify what is happening in our schools, and we're doing it a disservice when we don't change what we're doing. So it's still very alarming to me, because I presented this information almost a year ago now, at this point, the disproportionality by race in how we're disciplining our students. And I was told that that data wasn't accurate. And here we are today, we have almost the same exact data. And the data I presented was a three-year trend, so now we And the data I presented was a three-year trend, so now we have four years of the exact same data that shows the exact same trends, which are very, very alarming to me. So black students make up 14% of the population in Brevard County. And what we saw here was they continue to represent at least 30% of our discipline referrals, and they continue to represent more than that when it comes to ALC placement. And that should be concerning to us, because when you look at the types of behaviors, when you break it down to the types of behaviors, for instance, lawful disobedience, there's almost the exact same number of black students identified as white students, and that's not how that works. That's why risk ratio exists, that's why our black students are over 2.5, which is bad, it's not good, it's really, really bad. And our white students are below one, which is also bad, because it means we're under referring those students. One is the one number we want to achieve, we don't want zero, I mean, that's just not realistic either, but we want one, because it means it's happening equitably, it's happening with some sort of balance within the system, and, and I just, I'm so tired of us like not really paying attention to that and thinking about ways that we can address that, and I know, I know staff is, I know staff pays attention to that number, and I know that we are paying attention to the risk ratio at certain schools, but I think as a district, we need to be honest about it, and we need to be doing something about it and, and be forward-thinking and forward-talking about it, because it will never change, because ultimately, we are not doing the right thing by our students. When we look at, I asked about, you know, when we look at the certain schools that have those risk ratios by race, what are those trends? Are they, is there a trend perhaps that those are happening at schools that have higher populations of black students, or are those trends that are happening at schools where maybe that isn't the case? And, you know, clearly, we, we don't want to say the names of those schools out loud and identify them, but I would, I would advise you to ask those questions and just kind of take an internal, internal thought about that. When we look at the ALC, we have more black students in the ALC than we do white students, but when we look at every single referral, we don't have referrals that more black students are doing than white students. And so you'd have to have a very extreme scenario where you can justify that number to me, that we're treating those students equitably, and I, I don't know how anyone could justify that for me. That would be a significant amount of black students doing egregious behaviors over white students, and I, I've never seen that data to make that make sense to me. And one of the things that we discussed last time I brought this up was the potential that students were choosing home education, but we just saw the data there that that doesn't justify that switch in number either. So again, I think it's an obligation of the school system, but, but also of the school board, to really care about that number and have honest conversations about how we're going to change that. Because having data is great, but if we don't do anything with it, what's the point of it? We've had the same data, at least that I'm aware of, for four years, and it's increasing, it's not even getting better. What are we going to do about it? And sure, there's a multitude of factors that could influence behavior in students, but there are only so many factors that we also could have control over. And when you break it down by race and the numbers are so, so different from one another, bias is clearly one of them. It's not all of it, but it's one of them, and we can't ignore that. We, we have an obligation to do right by our students, and quite frankly, by our staff too, because sometimes there's unconscious biases happening as well. It's not always something super negative. So again, I just, I appreciate you for being honest, I appreciate you for breaking down what that risk ratio means too, right? Because again, we're not, nobody's alarmed by the fact that we're under one in certain demographics, but we should be alarmed by that, that's not good, that's not a good number. So I just, I don't know, I got 10 months left here, I've talked about this for the past three years, I, I'm not going to let this go, because it bothers me, it bothers me so much that it's presented in front of us for four years and we do nothing about it.
I, I do want to address what Ms. Jenkins brought up, because, you know, I, I don't agree with you with all, all of the, the whys, but I see the numbers and I have seen them, and I agree that they're different. I don't, something being less than one is not something, maybe you just, Miss, but you said something about that's alarming, that's not right, it means we're under disciplin- I don't necessarily think it means we're under disciplining. We, and, and I don't, and the other thing is, bias is going to be really hard to measure. And, and could it factor in? Yes, but without, you know, when Mr. Reed talked about, when we get in focus where if this is the infraction, here are your choices, that could potentially limit some of that because you can't give certain students lighter, I mean, it has to be something from this multiple choice, right? This is the offense, here are your options. You know, if we see students of different race committing the same infraction and getting two different results, that's where the bias could potentially come in. But if we see students committing different, you know, it needs to be the, the punishment fits the crime, right? And we can't, I am, wouldn't, won't ever be in favor, I hear, I will maintain what I'm, I am in favor of and what I have been supporting all along, which will make a difference, I believe, in, in the data points that we're looking at today. What I won't be in favor of is trying to do things to artificially manipulate the data, and I don't think that's necessarily what you're saying, but trying to do things so that we, we can, we can tell schools, because we had, we have had this problem in the past. You know, don't, the, the district came down and talked to a school because their risk ratios were off, and there was pressure to not discipline certain groups of students and, and, you know, to try to get those numbers right. That's not the right way to do it. What I will support is making sure that our schools that have those numbers, that you guys are, that they are coming in and helping problem solve and try, and those are the kinds of things that those teams are tackling by those broken-down demographics. Making sure that we have given staff permission to go in those schools and help them problem solve, do all of that, making sure that our Title I schools have the supports that they need, because, you know, we've seen more than anything, free and reduced lunch has a greater impact on, on the behavior risks than anything else. Making sure that those lower-income schools have all the supports that they need. If there's more that we need, you let us know, because I will absolutely support that. I support our mentoring, especially in schools like that, so that we've got people from outside the community coming in, because students that are mentored and have more people loving on them and speaking into their lives are going to be more successful at all races. All of those things I will support, but I, you know, we have to deal with the students who come to us, and we have to deal with the behaviors that happen, and if we can teach teachers strategies to be more successful in a diverse environment, meaning not just African-American, white, Hispanic, but also ESC, non-ESC, free, reduced lunch, not, you know, to be aware of student circumstances, let's do that, let's give them all the supports as possible, and, and the goal of that is to right-size those. But just to see how do we fix this data, I don't think the answer is going to be having some kind of a bias inventory. I think it's going to be a matter of support for the teachers, support for the students and the schools, so that we can reduce the behaviors, and then making sure that we are consistent regardless with when the behaviors do happen in doling out the discipline. I think that's the fair way of doing it. I, I don't like those numbers any more than you do, but I do have a different perspective on what we do with them and, and, you know, and where we are with that.
So I, I actually would say we don't really have a different perspective, I mean, there's just a part in there that's, that is different. You can't, I'm not asking anyone to measure bias, I, I'm arguing bias has already been measured, because again, risk ratio should be equal and even, and there are certain demographics that are way off from others. The only other answer for that would be that African-American students are more bad than white kids, which is clearly not true. So one of the major factors is clearly a bias of some sort. But what I agree with, with you is, when we see these numbers, first of all, we have to accept them as reality, and we have to acknowledge that they're true and they exist and the potential whys of they exist, in order to even effectively make the change that you're suggesting. So to target the fact that we have these over, oh, oh, brrr, over-referrals of these students in certain schools, yeah, we go in and no, nobody wants to go in and artificially manipulate numbers or tell people they can't do things for certain kids, but when we don't first acknowledge the numbers and why they're happening in the first place, we can't fix them correctly. Clearly, there's a bias, but that's not all of it. There's also the potential of other things going on, like the needs of these students aren't being met. How can we meet the needs of these students? Because when their needs aren't being met, their behaviors increase. For me, this isn't, it's not just a race thing, and it's not just about bias, for me, deep down, when you take a look at these numbers, it means we're not meeting the needs of certain groups of students, and that's our job, that's what matters to me.
All right, so I'd like to say something. I would agree with everybody, and I think everybody in this room would agree, that our African-American population of students has a higher disproportionate ability or statistics that show that they're being put into ALCs and having higher discipline, but I think that where we end up in a problem is that, one, I do not believe that there is a extreme bias that's creating all of this, that, I don't. What I believe is it's a holistic problem that we have with society. If you look at the incarceration rates of African-Americans compared to white individuals in the same area, you see the discrepancy, you look, when you walk around and you do all of the other metrics that go on between family and everything else, we run into that problem. And I think one of the issues that we run into is, is that BPS is forced to deal with all of these problems in this narrow scope, and it's unfair to say that it's BPS's problem, it's BPS that needs to do this, and what I think it needs is a holistic approach, and you see it in the cocoa areas, you see it in some of the other areas where you see the city officials, you see community groups, and you see them coming together, and then we don't have it in other areas. And I think that that's the main problem when we look at supporting not only the African-American children, but other children that are having problems with discipline and other things, is that they're in, some of them have the same needs, but our communities are not communicating together and we're not working together. It's one of the reasons we're going to see the cities, is to find out how we can actively work together, because we're all spending the same dollar on the same thing. So you say, take Melbourne, they have, housing development has money that they spend after-school programs, they actually spend that. Are we coordinating our after-school programs to be in line with them? Or is there an ability to coordinate those dollars, those efforts, those volunteers? We have a million volunteers in the Viera area that are willing to go to the point where they have to restrict the amount of parents to go to lunches. How do we, but we don't even have enough individuals in PTOs inside of our schools that are involved in like our inner area like Sable and others, we have teachers that are actually the PTO presidents. So it's a, it's a societal issue that I think we need to grab, and I think that's where, when I'm walking through a lot of my housing projects or along Aurora or inside the, and many of the parking or the trailer parks and stuff like that, I see it, and it's, and it's a societal problem that we need to fix, and I think that we as a community, we would do much better in these regards when we were able to work with our community partners to help, but I think that it's, it is, I would say, I've sat alongside of a lot of teachers, and I would say that, to say that the numbers are increased here and say that bias is a large part of it, I would disagree. I would put more of it on us as a society working together to help those children in general, so I just want to say that. Gene?
Mr. Trent, do you have anything to say?
Well, between the, the three that have spoken, it would just be a repeat, but I guess I will. I mean, to say that our teachers have a bias, because that's who you're talking about, is, is the discipline, that's where it starts, in the classrooms, is, I, it's disingenuous, I mean, for the ones that were, were, were saying that we trust you to teach our kids and house our kids, you know, to say that they are, you know, purposely targeting a group of kids, I can't go there. Could it happen? Sure, but to sit here and not to have any specifics and say that that's obviously what's happening, can't go there, so this is, obviously, there's deep, deep issues and problems that Matt had brought up there with the community, we're hoping that that's where we can, can lean on. I, I spent some time in a Title I school's principal's office this week, and, and he described situations where, I mean, our district said, your numbers are off, you know, and he's, he's like, look at me, look at my students, obviously, there's no bias here, we're doing the best we possibly can. It is? So I, I would just assume that that's, that's going to be the same throughout our district, that these principals and these administrators and these teachers are doing their absolute best on a daily basis to, to keep above water, and if we want to continue to train and retrain or emphasize areas that they can think, think situations through, so be it, but, you know, to walk the halls of our ALCs and, and to sit and talk to each one, which ones don't belong there? I, I don't know. I think that's, that's another place you could start, you know, how many, raise your hand if you don't feel you deserve to be here. I was in those classrooms, and, and it's just like in our correction centers, of course, they're, you know, they're all innocent. There's a lot more than just saying it's, it's numbers that we've got to deal with, it's, it's society, and I'm not at that point to just assume our teachers and educators are not doing what they're, they're to do. I just can't go there.
Sorry, we have to throw it away. All right, thank you, Mr. Trent. Here's what I'll say about this, and I just want to, I want to ask you this, I, I appreciate the slides that you put here, because honestly, as someone coming in from the outside and trying to understand and grasp the risk ratio and what this means, one of your slides was brilliant, and it explains it perfectly, and that really is, you know, I think it was slide number 10, 10 and 11, where you break this down for us, so I appreciate you giving us this data. What, ultimately, what happens when the risk ratio is over 2.5? Can you explain to me what that happens? Because there's a funding aspect of this that changes within the school, is that correct?
It's not 2.5.
No?
3.5.
3.5? Okay.
Yes, and you can be sanctioned by the state.
Okay, but isn't there federal dollars that also go into play here?
We have to set aside 15% when we're on the CCEIS list, but those are resources.
Right.
So we set aside resources to make sure those schools who have been identified.
Right.
On the list, that additional support goes to that school to problem solve.
Exactly.
Strategies and, you know, interventions.
Right.
To make sure that number decreases, we're obligated to do that.
That's what I was getting at with that, is that if, if these numbers are truly what they are, and there are federal dollars that are, that are saying, hey, our numbers are out of whack, we need to figure out how are we going to get some additional supports in there and help different students? So I, I understand, I hear you, Ms. Jenkins, I hear everyone up here, I, I do not believe that our staff is looking at individual students and disciplining different based on race, I really don't. Unfortunately, an offense is an offense, and I, I don't like that we even have to collect all of that, so it, to me, it just seems like that should be almost colorblind, this is the offense that was committed, it doesn't matter what color you are that you committed this offense, that this is the offense, this is the outcome of that. And so that is, it's, it's one of those things that we, we collected that, I understand why we're doing it, and I, I get it, but it's also frustrating at times. I will say this, you know, last year, when we looked at our quarter one, we had 179 white students that were in the ALC compared to 114 black students that were in the ALC. So when you look at numbers and you kind of go back and forth, right now, there's 16 more African-American students that are, that are at the ALC than our white students, and, and it's something we're just going to continually have to keep on looking at and address and figure out, how do we change this? Is this, is this a problem with society? Is this a problem with our district? Where, where is the root of the problem? The human element, we can never control, that is the reality of it, so we are going to have to just continually keep trying to improve it. To me, I think it is improving, maybe that's being naive, but I, I think we are on the right track with a lot of the things that we've implemented, and we're going to see some dividends paid, but it is going to take time, unfortunately, to see those results. So I appreciate you presenting this data to us, I know we're moving on to Title IX now, they were, she was chomping at the bit with her microphone, so if you, we'll go ahead and.
Can I, I, can I just say something to that, though?
Well, we, the only thing is, we have a time start and stop, Ms. Jenkins, at 4:30?
I understand, this is really important, this is really important.
Go right ahead.
So... It should be colorblind, but it's not. That's exactly what the data is saying. It's not, and it's not getting better, the number is increasing, it's getting worse. And the, the feeling that this is a problem with society, yeah, it sure is, but we're a reflection of society, we build society with the schools that we have. And so, if we are not willing to be honest about it and to address it and change it, that will never change either. So, I am just going to ask again, that you ask individually, have a conversation with Ms. Stampier. Take a look at where it's happening and the schools that it's happening, because I heard a whole lot of assumptions about neighborhoods and schools and race. Take a look at it, because it will open your eyes. This is a blanket problem. It's not just in certain communities, it's a blanket problem. But I do want to have one clarifying question answered. Can you please explain to me, and if I'm wrong, so 1.0 is really the neutral number we're looking for? What does it mean when you're under 1.0 for risk ratio? And thank you, Ms. Trent.
Sure, just again, mathematically, less than one would be your lesser referrals, less whatever it is you're evaluating for that particular demographic group would be receiving referrals when compared to the masses or the other demographic groups. So, less than, less likely for that to happen.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the Title IX section of this. I know we're running out of time, so.
So, can you hear my phone? I'm not sure if it's on. It's not on? Okay. So, I'm going to go over last year's cases again and just sort of talk about where we were last time I presented. So, just a reminder, when I came on board, we had 25 open cases from last year. So we've been working really hard to, you know, streamline our process and improve that so that we could get these cases closed out. And I think that you'll see when we get to this year's data that our updated processes are working. So, we had a total, this isn't, so the way this is laid out is different than how Mr. Reed's is laid out. So I just want to say, this is, we had 60 formal complaints total last year. So, in October, I broke them down for you, where they were at that time. And I'm going to now break them down in January for you, where those 60 cases are at this time. So, you can see that we are down to only six that are still open. And those are, many of those are very, very close to closing. So, we have six that are still open. One of them is waiting for a decision maker, three of them are with decision makers. One is still in the investigation process, but it is very close to wrapping up. And then one of those is with labor relations. Now, this year, we've had a total of 17 formal complaints. And we have seven of those, so you can see in October, we had 12. We've already closed out some of our cases from last year, or from this year, I mean, which is great. So we're doing a much better job of staying in that 60-day timeline. We also have rolled out the decision maker being the part, we partnered our schools so that the decision makers no longer appear where, because we really disconnected our school principals from this whole process. And we've seen, just by engaging them back in the process, it's already going smoother.
So when you say we disconnected them from the process, that was last year?
That was last year.
Right.
Right.
Well, in the beginning of this year.
But the change has been made that they are
Change has been made where now they are serving in the decision maker role. So they have a partner school and they are the decision maker for each other. So, we tried to pair schools up that were similar, similar in size, similar in maybe, you know, how many cases they had last year, just trying to not overload, you know, where one of the partners is going to be overloaded with, you know, doing a lot of work and not really contributing to those, the need. So, we have, right now, we have seven of the 17 are in the investigation process. Four of them are with decision makers, and that's our principals. And two of those went through the informal resolution process, which is the best-case scenario. That means that everybody comes to the table and they come to an agreement of how it's going to be solved. And the case is closed and everybody, you know, moves on. Three have been dismissed. And we've had zero be substantiated at this point. And one was unsubstantiated. It's really, the verbiage for Title IX is really more unfounded. A lot of times, there's not enough evidence. But right now, we currently have 11 cases that are open. And so you can see that we've successfully closed out cases. And we have three of them that are set to the, so after the decision maker, after the families notified of the decision maker's decision, they have five days to appeal that. So, the beginning of next week, three more cases will make it through the five-day window of that. So...
Did it go in your mouth?
In my mouth.
I'm so sorry.
Hopefully, I got a little protein out of it, I guess.
I know, I'm like, thank you!
I left my water back there.
It's been flying around us, so if you see us, if you're swatting.
Actually, it just got out.
There's one on my microphone.
Yeah.
We're sue.
Okay, so, total, that's 17 cases that are open, but, oh, thank you. But you can see clearly that our new process is improved. Before I move on from that, we also, one thing that we have just started doing is tracking that window. So we can start seeing schools that are struggling to stay in that window, that we can go out and do some coaching. We are also taking our process that we came up with for tracking the windows. And we're looking at old data to kind of go back and kind of analyze where some of that support can come into play and how we can adjust our training as we move forward as well. We also, you all approved the contract for a new consulting company, ICS. And we are extremely happy with that new company. So, their advice is, you can sense an experience in a K-12 situation, where it's, you know, the K-12, K-12 program is very different than higher education. And so, you really need people that are experienced in that and really giving advice that's practical for what our administrators are trying to, you know, navigate in this process. Because it is not an easy process. So, our bullying data?
Can I ask a question real fast?
Yeah.
Real fast, I know we're time-certain. So on the previous slide, what you're saying is, is that, one, we changed the company that we were dealing with that was giving us the supports, giving the presentations to the staff and everything else, and you feel better about that, that this is better? And then the other one you said was that now our principals have more involved in the process.
Yes.
Are there any other factors that assisted this to be a reduced number of Title IX or anything else?
So, we created a flow chart that really outlined the steps, how many days they need to be at each step. That, I think, was very helpful to see it visually. I don't even, you know, a lot of times when you have a lot of words on a paper, I don't even know if they realized how out of compliance they were. And it became very difficult to, because, I mean, 60 cases, if they, let's just say they all end up needing a decision maker and our decision makers are up here, that is really hard to find. Oh, no.
Oh, not another one.
I'm not.
Thank you, thank you for that.
So, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so our bullying data, now this is comparing how many we had at the same time. So how many, you know, last time, we talked about at quarter one, how many we had last year compared to quarter one this year. And now I'm breaking it down for quarter two. So, you can see, we've had a very, you know, a big increase. Last time we met on these numbers, we were, we didn't see a huge increase from last year to this year on the substantiated cases. But that has changed now in quarter two. So, that's a little concerning. You can see that our substantiated cases from this time last year to this time this year is up 52% as well as our unsubstantiated cases are 56%. That's a lot of extra work that is burdening our administrators. We know that there is a huge need for prevention. But I'll be honest with you, we are buried in supporting these numbers as well. So, we're trying to dig ourselves out and we've done some things to try to really support our administrators through the process where it's not quite as labor-intensive on us so we can free up our prevention, our person who does prevention. But, so in the past, risk management really reviewed these investigations and made sure they were accurate. And now our person who is, she reviews the, she reviews the investigations, does the training, provides the support, and also is responsible for the prevention. So you can see where that is, you know, a struggle. So, right now, we're doing a really great job of streamlining our Title IX investigations. And our next focus is really digging into this bullying process to hopefully free up our prevention person to, you know, get her on out in the schools. And we've looked at the data to see which schools are, which schools are, have a lot of cases. So we know that they need to be our priority with prevention. We also have some ideas that we're working on to roll out some easy messaging to put on, you know, graphics that our schools can put on their website, that they can put on their marquees, they can put in their newsletters if they are sending those out, they can put it on social media, really helping families and students understand the difference between conflict and bullying. Because we, I mean, and we talked about this some last time. Our plans are still there, it's just, you know, we're slow and steady attacking it. And we are, as these numbers increase, it's making it harder to take that on. But we're getting there. So we're, we can see the light at the end of the tunnel with some different shifts in roles of individuals and staff to try to, you know, really sort of shift who is helping with the, some of the burden of the investigations so we can free up Ms. Elam, who is wonderful at the prevention piece. So, and that is, that's it, if you have any questions.
Do you have any questions? Anyone?
I think I've used up all my time.
You've used up all your question time?
I mean, is there, do you see a trend in, for the bullying complaints? Like, what they're being bullied for or how?
So, Lisa reads all of those, so I don't know if you want to come up here. I don't know if you're seeing a trend in specifics.
Or do you feel like it's just kind of, the increase is equal because the increase overall?
I would say that it is across the board. We will see a lot, it's also age-specific. When you're looking at elementary school versus middle or high school, you're going to see different reasons a lot of times. Meanness, then you do have the protective classes, it could be race-related, it could be LGBTQ plus status-related. So it is across the spectrum. A lot of times, it's conflict. And going back to what Julie said, it really needs that we have our families involved, we have our students involved, and we're teaching, and we're advocating and helping our teachers when they're seeing the behaviors to minimize at the conflict stage so it doesn't grow and develop.
Do you feel like, I feel like we always make an assumption, which is, it's probably an accurate assumption, but we always make an assumption that this often happens outside of school, it carries outside of school, social media, things of that nature. Are you feeling like that's pretty consistent and continuously happening?
And we do see a lot of that. Social media is absolutely a trend that is there and has been there, and even more so. And in our state statute and policy, cyberbullying doesn't have to be repeated, to be defined as substantiated for bullying. So again, that becomes the education piece, to let our kiddos know, let the parents know, let our staff know that anything that's happening on social media, when you hit that button once, it goes to the masses. So that's an excellent point.
Thanks, I was just curious.
Sure.
And that's one change that we just made to help our principals. We added the definition of cyberbullying right next to where they're going through in marking. So, because that is a little bit of a misconception that it has to be repeated. It escalates online very quickly.
All right, hearing no further questions, I think we're good, thank you.
Thank you.
Right, good job. All right, so, our last presentation is a Guardian program informational update. I think they're clearing out. This one only has three slides, so. I'm sure there'll be a lot of conversation. Thank you guys for patiently waiting, I know I see you over there, so. Just be prepared that there might be fruit flies that are going to fly into your mouth, so just... Okay. Disclaimer, I'm making you aware, you're going to get a little extra protein today.
Are we waiting or are we?
I'd say go ahead. Yeah.
All right, good afternoon, Board Chair Wright, Board members and Dr. Rendell in his absence. On the October 24th Board meeting, Mrs. Wright, as well as I think Mrs. Campbell, asked Dr. Rendell would he have staff reach out to other counties in regards to the Guardian program. At that time, after the meeting, he and I met, he gave me my marching orders, and I reached out to 10 counties. And I got in contact with nine of the 10. The last county, I was unable to make contact with my colleague. But I'll go ahead and get started. These are the counties that I contacted. And on November 2nd, I provided you with an update of those conversations to those counties. And this update is, just added the two, Okaloosa and Marion. And in Volusia County, I reached out to my colleague and he shared that they have 66 schools, 105 guardians, one in each elementary school, one in each middle school, and two in each high school. No school-based employees are guardians. Guardians are employed by the district. Guardians are also assigned to charter and alternate-site schools. There are SROs and SRDs in every high school and most middle schools. Guardians in Volusia County also respond to after-hour calls related to facilities instead of the admin. I'll repeat that. Guardians respond to all after-hour calls related to the facilities instead of the admin. Typically, the admin would be the first one to respond, to go to a school and to see what's going on. But in Volusia County, the guardian takes that responsibility. In Miami-Dade, reached out to my colleague and he shared with me that they have 516 schools. They do not have a Guardian program. They have an internal police department with 500-plus officers and deputies. They have an internal police department with five hundred plus officers and deputies. Okay? In Lee County, my colleague shared that they have ninety-two schools. They started with three hundred employees to participate in the guardian program, but only four came through the program successfully. Three hundred participated and four completed the program. And it's totally voluntary. And they were in, at the time of the conversation, they were in the process of trying to, of figure out how to identify the guardians versus the non-guardians or the police officers, et cetera. Classroom teachers are not allowed to be guardians. They currently have SROs in all of their schools. And Lee County also is in the process of outfitting all ninety-two schools with the open gate security system. And that is like a metal detector, like a little walkthrough, like you go to the airport. That's the new mechanism that's being outfitted in most, in a lot of schools throughout the state. In Sumter County, they have nine total schools. One high school and combo school, one middle school, five elementary school, and one alternate school. They currently have six or seven guardians. They are, this is a volunteer opportunity, again, only for admin, no school-based personnel. The assistant superintendent is also a guardian. There are SROs at all nine schools. The high school and combo schools both have SRO and a specialist. In Pinellas County, they have a hundred and twenty-eight schools, nineteen high school and combo schools, twenty-three middle schools, seventy-seven elementary schools, and nine specialty schools. All seventy-seven elementary schools have a specialist or a guardian. No school-based employees are armed. Specialists and guardians are trained by the sheriff. Specialists and guardians wear identifiable clothing. They have, they have already established what that is. And all secondary schools have either a deputy or an officer. In Osceola County, they have sixty schools. They do not have a guardian program. Currently, Osceola only uses SROs at all of their district sites. All secondary schools either have a deputy or an officer. Swanee County. My conversations with Swanee County COO is they have eleven schools, no charter schools. They have a total of sixty guardians. Teachers in specific roles such as PE, driver's ed, and hope participate in the guardian program. Every school has SROs and guardians, but they have zero specialists. The goal is to have five at every school. The sheriff's department trains the guardians. And Swanee County exceeds the mandated training hours for guardians required by the state. They also hold simulated training each week by the SWAT team at their schools. Very aggressive approach to the, to the process. In Lake County, they have forty-six schools, fifteen charter schools. They also have twenty-one guardians with only administrators being permitted to participate in the guardian program. They have fifty SROs with Lake County Sheriff's Department or local municipalities. Elementary schools have guardians, middle schools have SROs, high schools have SROs or both. The guardians are trained by the Lake County Sheriff's Department. And Lake County meets all state mandated training hours required. In addition, they provide quarterly training as well as proficiency shooting during those trainings. And these last two are the, the updated two that I did not send to you all on November second. Okaloosa County, my colleague shared that they have thirty-eight schools with four charter schools. They have seventeen guardians. Again, the program is on a voluntary basis. Law enforcement, school administration, and district administration are the only people that are aware of who the seventeen guardians are in the event of a threat. The volunteers will put on a sash that they always carry with them to distinguish the difference between them and the threat once law enforcement, once a threat is deemed. The volunteers will put on a sash. The Okaloosa Sheriff's Department is responsible for training the guardians. Additionally, they have fifty-seven deputies, one at every elementary school and middle school, and two at every high school. And my next attempted conversation was Marion County. I was unable to get in contact with Marion. I reached out several times and did not receive a phone call back from Marion. But I will give you Brevard County's numbers. Of course, we don't have, we have a few guardians. Our, we have a hundred and six campuses. We have fifty-eight elementary, twenty-nine secondary schools, that's middle and high, four alt sites and fifteen charters. And of that, we have seventy-six total SROs between BCSO and our local municipalities. And we also have thirty-four specialists and two K9s. And our guard, we have four charter schools that participate in the guardian program and, oh, contracted services, excuse me. And that's Odyssey Charter, Palm Bay Academy, Palm Bay Academy Middle, and Pineapple Classic, Classical Academy, Palm Cove Classical Academy.
What was the last, those four have?
Contracted services, not guardians.
So to clarify, we don't have any guardians.
We do not have any guardians.
The pure guardian.
Correct, correct, correct. Thank you. Are there any?
Thank you.
Questions?
I'm going to go ahead and let my fellow board members start, and then I'll wrap it up.
The, so the numbers for Brevard, just to clarify, when, when you say, so there's seventy-six SROs and thirty-four school security specialists. Do the municipalities that we use instead of the sheriff's office fall in the SRO total?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm not going to dive deep into this conversation because we started it last time and I don't know where we're going here today. But everyone knows where I stand on this issue. The one thing that I've always said that I totally would be okay with is increasing our high school campuses that are larger and complex and inside-outside to more than one person seems logical to me. But I also know that that's not so simple, right? I know it was probably two years ago when the sheriff came and spoke about this, that it was difficult staffing, period. So I don't even know if that's a need that could be met with personnel. But that's something I'm open to.
Did you get it?
Yeah.
Miss Campbell.
We're getting violent.
Yeah, so one of the. So, over the last few months, have tried to have this conversation with every principal that I visited and different school visits. And even just as late as yesterday, having their conversation and also talking to other counties. And I know Marion, you didn't get to talk to them, but I talked to one of their school board members and I knew that, now they have principals who, and assistant principals who are serving. So I don't know if that's the only ones who can serve, but I don't know if they're known or unknown. They're known to that school board member, so I don't know. But I, you know, as I've had this conversation, you know, I remember that conversation when we, we talked about previously, if we could hire more security specialists, could we find them? Because we do sometimes sit with some vacancies and they try to hire them as soon as possible. But if they, if we have that vacancy and they hire them, they have to go through the process of the four, four to five weeks of training before we can get them up and running. And they're not going to do that class just for one person. We try to make till we have a critical mass. So in other words, there are plenty of times when we are short-staffed. And we have people who get, we get guys and gals that get pulled away because they have duties or training or whatever. Then we move our security specialists around to cover, and we are very, very, very often left with one person per campus on some big campuses, high population schools, high needs schools, high incidence schools. And so, you know, it, it, that is where it comes down to what is the other solution? And this is a solution that I appreciate you doing the research that, that other school districts are doing. Thank you for, for being, for getting this, this good sampler. I think this is probably a good sampler from across the state because I think we have a few others probably, but there are districts who are not using any kind of guardian security specialist situation at all. There's some are using it in the exact same way we are as a supplement. There are some who are doing the undercover, people don't know kind of ways. And there are people who are using teachers and there's, you know, there's ways, ones who are using only admin. So there's lots of, for us to look at, and some of them have been doing it now for five and a half years. As I mentioned last time, that makes me a little more comfortable. All of my principals were pretty much in agreement that if, if we did this and we did it right, there would be something that they could see as valuable on their campus. I mean, one even went so far as to say, why wouldn't we do it? Here are the concerns that I would have. If we start hashing it out, here's some things that I would want, I would want to see in place. One, everybody needs to understand that these people have to go through the same rigorous training, which our sheriff is requiring more than the state mandate in a hundred and thirty-two hours. I think it's a hundred and seventy-six hours, a hundred and seventy-seven, somewhere like. Because Brevard has to be bigger than, and this is an area, I want us to be bigger and better than everybody. I also think we have, for our security specials, we have the requirement that they either have to have military, law enforcement, or security background, correct? Preferred. I would like to, if we move forward with this as someone who's in another position, I would like to maintain that standard, that it has to be someone who has that background, that that's what we're really looking for, is those people who are military, military law enforcement or security background. Sometimes that's hard to find in, in, you know, in this, you know, group of, a population of employees, but it can be found. Another concern, I think we've, just because it comes up every time that the, the articles pop up, it's come out a couple of times. We're not talking about classroom teachers. I don't believe we need, you know, I think we're probably in agreement with that because a classroom teacher in a critical incident has one job, and that job is to keep those students in that classroom. It's not to leave them. I could see if the union was amenable to it, maybe a TOA who moves around, or another teacher that is assigned a movement type situation. You know, but I, if, that would be up to, if the union is agreeable to that. And again, if somebody who would want to do that. As I've talked, really the number one concern that was consistent with every administrator that I talked to is it would depend on the person. And so what I got from that is I think our principals need to have strong input into this because they know the character of the employee. I don't think they need to have the final say because there could be a principal who, who is absolutely opposed to this and would say no, 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 no to anybody who might be a really good qualified candidate. But they need, we need to definitely have their input as to who, who would be, if, if the person who is applying would be a good fit for that role. Another concern that I had from last time, this is just leftover from last time, is there was, there was some concern because we were, the board, this was before I got on, but the, the board at the time was considering using this as the, we didn't have the funding, we didn't have the SROs. We have to have, we legally, after murder, shaman deck, let's have to have an armed person on every campus. This was an option to get an armed person on every campus until the board put extra money into getting the SROs and doing the security specialists. So there was the, the possibility that people might be moved around from school to school. They might not want to volunteer for it because then I might get reassigned because this school doesn't have one and they, they would move me. I don't want that to be a part of it. To be honest, we might have some schools who have zero, we might have some schools that have five. What the person who would mean to do harm to our students and to our schools, they won't know where they are. They'll just know we have them. It would be, is my thought about that. And so I'm not really interested in moving people around to, you know, to meet a quota necessarily. But, you know, that, but just if we're going to have them, it's just known that we have them and people won't know from the public that obviously the administrators need to know, the law enforcement needs to know, you know, need to know basis, right? The, the people who need to know would, would know and nobody else would. That's, that's kind of where I am on that. But I just want to make sure that those factors as we move forward. I, I really would like to see us hold that, that requirement or preference that they have the, the important background knowledge. One thing to consider, Board, on that particular issue is there's legislation going through right now, and I don't know where it'll, where it'll go. Session still has another month and a half to go. But our legislators are considering tweak to the guardian program. And that is if someone comes in, the sheriff has the, the flexibility, the sheriff would have the flexibility if it passes, to, if someone is retired law enforcement, for them not to have to complete the entire hundred and seventy-seven hours. That could be shortened if the sheriff chose to because they just, they say they just retired from law enforcement. They could not have that part of the training which they would already have had as a retired law enforcement officer. And so that's just something to keep our eye on. Wouldn't be something that the sheriff would have to do, but they'd have that option to move those people through the training a little faster. And then they would just have to finish the parts that were specific to working in a school setting. So that was, that's my input I've collected over the last few months.
All right.
Got him.
Campbell, Mr. Susan.
Yeah, I want to say thank you. You're right, Ms. Campbell. When we had this conversation before, it was again, I think every year we deal with another major issue, right? So this one was where we were dealing with the security. And we did, we have two municipalities that I know for a fact that have very hard time filling those positions. So we had our elementary schools needed to fill them, and we filled them with our security specialists, which I will tell you, in the beginning, there were a lot of concerns. But I will tell you now that many of my elementary schools love their specialists to the point where when we try to move them around, they go crazy. And there's a lot of positives towards that. So that was there. Let me ask you something, Officer Klein and Mr. Wilson. What, do we have a capacity issue in dealing with, like if we were to say we wanted fifteen more specialists, are we, would we be able to fill those positions or are we at a spot where that's a thirty-four, thirty-five, forty is a tough area?
It's been difficult to fill. I mean.
It has. There, there is a limit to it. And the reason for that is, is as you saw in the numbers, yes, it is a very rigorous training. But before they even get to the training, they go through a background check that comes from the school, and it also comes from the sheriff's office. And then they even go as far as a review board, and then they go through a psychological before we even send them to the training. So sometimes by the end of the review process, we've nixed, on the last group we had, we nixed quite a few. So it's not the, how do I put this? This is not a job for the faint of heart because what we put them in the schools for. What they're there for is for safety, to protect the staff and the children, and you have to have someone that's able to fulfill that job. And sometimes we get people in there that are ready to do it, but they just will not match that. So to be truly honest with you, it would depend to, to fill fifteen extra specialists.
I was just, yeah, threw a number out there.
I think the last class was like four or five that graduated.
Yes, we were at capacity and now we are two, fixing to be three.
Fixing to be three. Okay, thank you.
No, great. Thanks for the information. It's, it's really nice to see what other districts are doing and that it wasn't outlandish for us to even bring this up to talk about it because security is the utmost important. I trust the two of you to, to come back also in this process to say this is, this is what I think we need, and then we'll take it from there. But yeah, I, I see like Ms. Campbell said, it's all over the board of solutions. And, and like we've said from the beginning, everything's got to be out on the table for the security of our students and staff. That's, that's what's important. So we, I think we're all committed to that here. And thank you for, for reaching out and getting that, those details. I mean, for us, I mean, we kind of knew that already, but I think it's good for the public to see that and to hear that we're not coming up with something that other districts are not already doing. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys. I appreciate you guys taking this deep dive into this. You know, every district's a little bit different, which is, that's great. That's, that's what makes us all unique, right? But what I'm seeing a kind of as a pattern, a reoccurring pattern, is that most of the high schools have more than one officer in most districts that are using these programs. We typically have one and maybe sometimes a security specialist, sometimes not. So we currently have vacancies with security specialist. You know, when I brought this forward, everyone thought, oh, we're arming teachers. Let me be very clear, one hundred percent, that was never on the table for me as far as a recommendation. Never wanted to arm a school teacher that's teaching children in a classroom. My, my thought process behind the guardian program, and I think what is so great about it is that, number one, the element of surprise, like you had spoke about, Ms. Campbell, with some of these counties, that, that we don't necessarily, the public doesn't know who they are or where they are, but they're there. They're there to protect should the need ever arise. The guardian program also, I feel like is a great solution. The guardian program also, I feel like, is a great solution to some of our security needs because we are having trouble staffing the other, the security specialists. And in a perfect world, we could hire another hundred SROs, but the reality is that's probably not gonna happen. So, I mean, I, what I would like to see ultimately, as we move forward with these conversations, is, again, the principal having a say, I think that's a great idea. I honestly, I love that. Maybe not the final say, but them actually having input into this person should or should not be part of this program, should they choose to. And again, when I say the principal having a say, again, these are not classroom teachers, these are people that are serving in capacity of like an administrator or a dean or things of that nature, where they're not in the classroom with the students all the time. But I think we should, at least at a very bare minimum, move in a direction where we're placing a couple guardians at each high school location, a guardian at each middle school location, and a guardian at each elementary. That's what I would love to see, I know that that's a huge ask and I know that that comes with some dollars, so. So I guess the next task that I would just ask you to do is to find out if, what would that cost be? What would that look like if we added two guardians to every high school? Because there's a training fee that's associated with that, right? Okay, so the two guardians at each high school, one at our middle schools and then one at our elementary schools, it's a lot of guardians to train and I'm sure.
Yeah, so to be clear, this would be an employee already on staff. So we're not adding a security specialist position, we're adding a guardian cost. So it would be the training and the supplement cost.
Training is, the training has been in the past covered by the security funds from the state.
Unless they have done away with that.
No, they're there, but there's not quite enough there to train the amount of guardians that.
That money is dwindling.
Well, the bottom line is, we would figure out how much it would cost and we could show you what could be covered by existing security funds and what we'd have to go find.
Okay.
And the equipment costs.
Could you repeat, two at every high school?
One at every middle school and one at every elementary school. And then I would be curious to know what our vacancies are for the specialists. We have three, you said, or two?
Two, fixing to be a third one.
Okay, and, all right. And the specialists move around, correct? Do you move them sometimes depending on if somebody calls out?
Some move, yes.
Okay.
Some of them stay stationary.
And what about SROs, same scenario or no? Those are always at the same school, I mean, I see mine, mine tend to be all the same ones.
They're assigned to that same school unless there's a certain need that comes up, like a therapy dog deployment or something along those lines, we do shuffle them occasionally, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we do have a couple of our high schools that have a security specialist in addition to an SRO or an SRD. And so that's who usually we pull when we have a vacancy at another school.
At another school, okay. And, I mean, in the event that we had to pull those, I think it would also help as far as, hey, there's, there's a couple guardians that are on campus that are there to fill in should they need to, and God willing, they never need to, that's what we, that's what we hope for. But that's what I would like to see, Board, if you're in favor of that, just getting the data back on how much will it cost to add these additional guardians and then working with the sheriff on, I know you, we had talked about this before, some on like securing some of the funding that you have to grab from the state for the training. I don't know if that has been initiated or if, where we're at with that.
We are in the process of working out all the logistics on it. One of the issues that came up is that the sheriff's office is required to carry an extra liability insurance
Right.
on each one of those specialists and guardians that go through the program. And currently, that's around thirteen-hundred dollars annually on each person.
Okay.
So the safety funds have been able, in the past, to help mitigate those costs. Unfortunately, because there's more sheriffs that are now participating in this program than there were a couple of years ago, the funding has gotten a lot more tighter.
Okay.
So we're in the process of working all those details out now.
Okay, all right, and that may be something that the district needs to look at. Is the state statute require the sheriff to pay that? It doesn't, okay.
Because he's responsible for the training.
For the training.
It kinda goes hand-in-hand with it. And then it goes through the Florida Sheriff's Risks Program and then they pretty much take care of it from there if something happens.
Okay, all right, well, I would, obviously, we need to know what the cost looks like. And then, you know, as a voluntary program, we don't know how successful this will be because you don't know who's going to apply and.
That's why I'm not really interested in a quota so much. I mean, we might have, but if you look at Swanee, Swanee has sixty and they only have eleven schools. If you kinda, I don't know how big those schools are, but, you know, we have seven times as many schools as that. I mean, we, I don't know that we had four-hundred-and-twenty people volunteered to do it, but, you know, I mean, and then going, weeding out through the process. It could be a lot, it could be a little, you know, we just need to see what, what people walk through the door.
Right, I do think that that is gonna be, that'll be really telling of how successful this will be or not, if we have the people that are interested in it and that can pass the rigorous testing and things that gotta go through to be a part of this program, which is good, those are all good things. So if you're able to get, gather that and bring it back to us, I think that will help us as a board to be able to make a decision on how we move forward from here, if that's okay.
Yeah, so some next steps is the cost associated with that number of additional or guardians and maybe a survey, the people who might be eligible to see if they're interested. So we see what kind of numbers you might have. And then we need to put together a timeline because this training would probably take place this summer if we were gonna launch this next year.
Okay.
So we have to kind of backwards plan with the sheriff's department to see if this, you know, when we have to make a decision.
Okay.
One of the things we haven't done is get the input of the sheriff. I think I know what it will be, but can we get input on timeline, costs, you know, numbers? I think that would be good to hear specifically. I mean, I can pick up the phone and call him, but, you know, for us as an organization.
Right, right.
Give his input.
If we can also find out what the knockouts are in the other places, meaning like Swanee, did they say only law enforcement, only foreign milit, you know what I mean? If there's some sort of knockouts that they would do that said only these people inside those classifications qualify, that would be, that would helpful too.
And I, I mean, I like that, but I also realize that we may not have a whole bunch of ex-law enforcement or military, so maybe the preferential being part of it, but not necessarily a mandate.
I just wanted to see what they were throwing out, that's all. Because sometimes there's some interesting stuff in there.
Okay, does anybody else have any other questions? Or, no? No? All right, I'm gonna honor the four-thirty stop time because.
We did it.
Yeah, we're really close, so speaking of further business, this meeting will be adjourned.